Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall meeting for April 1, 2025. I call this meeting in order and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Report?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We'll start out our meeting this evening with the town hall portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to address the committee this evening regarding anything that's on our agenda, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to address the committee at this time? Okay. You have one and a half minutes left. No, I'm just kidding.
I would actually just like to say thank you so much for addressing me, you know. As I've gotten older, I've gotten more involved within the community, and it's women like you who, you know, stand up and are able to communicate with curious women like me who want to do better. So I feel like when leaders such as yourself do that and recognize the curiosity and are open to meeting and sharing, that's what gets somebody interested and more involved. So I, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for acknowledging me.
I look forward to talking more.
Yeah, absolutely. This is how people get reelected. This is how people, you know, connect with the community and get to know them, and trust me, I will be sharing this word of mouth for anyone who listens. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ruby. Thanks for being here. Anyone else like to address the committee at this time? Go ahead.
My name is Ed Kalisinski, and I'm the owner of Magnum Realty, currently Magnum Realty on Devon. By the way, it's the oldest real estate company in Bartlett. We started in 1987, and-
What's your address?
I'm sorry?
The clerk just needs your address, just for the record.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is 456 Sundance Drive, Bartlett, Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
And at that-
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, at the time that I came into Bartlett, it was unincorporated. I had a little fiasco trying to get it in. There was a little argument between Hanover Park and Bartlett, and I certainly didn't want to go to Hanover Park. So I had all the credentials and all the requirements. It was about three years of battling to get into Bartlett, and I did. And I got in as B2. At that time, there was a lot of promises of being more commercialized on Devon. I don't know if you're familiar with the property. It's supposed to be on committee tonight, I think. I was told I could come here, I should come here. I don't know exactly how it works, so I'm here now to find out if-
Yeah, we'll be talking about it on the second item for the zoning, so that will be on, yeah, the second item, I believe. Is that right?
Should I wait around here then, or?
Sure, if you want to, yeah. We'll be talking about it when it comes up on the committee-
Do you need me for any questions on the rezoning into residence?
It's great that you're here, yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
At the table in the hallway, there should be an agenda item, so if you want to get-
I didn't see it.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just wait around, and if there's any questions, we'll shoot them over to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Dominic, anybody online like to address the committee meeting?
No, sir.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to standing committee reports. For standing committee reports, Finance and Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an agenda item this evening, 2025-2026 Budget Approval Discussion. The village board reviewed the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget at the March 4th and the March 18th Finance Committee meetings. The following adjustments to the proposed budget were suggested last week. Number one, increase the Administration/Department/Community Relations budget by $2,000 for the increase in funding to the Fourth of July Committee. Number two, reclass the budget of $150,000 for the Water and Sewer Study from the Professional Services budget in the General Fund to the Water and Sewer Funds. Number three, reduce the Professional Services budget by $67,000 for the elimination of the additional full-time social worker request. Number four, reduce the Golf Program Machinery and Equipment budget by $320,000 for the removal of the Golf Cart Lease Purchase Agreement. Number five, increase the Golf Program Golf Cart Maintenance budget by $16,000 due to the removal of the Golf Cart Lease Purchase Agreement. Staff is seeking guidance on these items to prepare the final budget for the board approval on April 15th. At this time, we will open it up for discussion.
You want to take them one item at a time, Joe?
Just see if the board has any questions.
Well, I know definitely I'm going to have some questions on the golf portion of it, but-
You need to get closer to your microphone, Ray.
Right, or speak louder, maybe.
You're pointing it that way, and nobody can hear you.
I was directing at Joe. I know that I'm going to have questions, and I'm sure I'm going to ask staff for some input on the golf portion of the budget, and I'm just wondering if, I don't want to be out of turn, so I don't know if we should take these in numerical order.
You want us to want to do a straw poll on each one? I think that's the easiest. You want to just run through that, Joe? Just say, bring them up one at a time, and we can sign in them.
All right, so number one, increase the Administrative Department/Community Relationship budget by $2,000 for the increase in funding in the Fourth of July Committee.
Mine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
All right. Release the, reclassify the budget of $150,000 for the Water and Sewer Study.
Mine.
See, we talked about that.
Reduce the Professional Services budget by $67,000 for the elimination of the full-time social worker.
Mine.
Wallen, in agreement on that?
I mean, I think it helps with that police officer, it uses stress on them, I think, compared to an actual police officer, it's a drop in the bucket for a boss.
Yeah.
I thought we were going to see the results of the study, like have it in there, and then we would still have the option.
Yeah, I thought that's the way that we actually decided, is leaving it in to the budget, which it's in there already. Will, are you here? I think we were planning on leaving it, from my understanding, we were going to leave it in the study, and then because, but this won't be a part of that study, actually, because they're not an actual employee, right?
Correct. This is a contract employee, and so we will bring the contract for the two police department social workers to you at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think it's, as long as it's a contract and it's not hiring a full-time person, I think Will made his case last time that it's a very valued position, so, yeah.
I would like to see that we push the U46 expense of those social workers over to U46.
How could it always be a school? Like, why would it be just schools? Like, wouldn't it just be everyone?
So I think I can provide a little bit of clarification on that. The social workers at the school primarily handle any type of incident that happens within the school, someone seeking assistance, needing help with family matters. The only time that our social worker is involved in the school is when we are going to take enforcement action. So it is any incident where we are the first report, any circumstance where we would be issuing a citation, that could be for fighting, for vape, alcohol, nicotine, and these, the diversion and referral programs, I'm sorry, diversion and redirect programs are a process that only we can offer that is in lieu of receiving a citation. They go through a process so that they stay out of the court system. You know, there's a lot of police departments under scrutiny for issuing citations to children that are in school. Ultimately, they have a court date, the parents pay for the fine, and they don't really receive any additional counseling or education on changing their behaviors. That's what this process is, so there is a separation of what the social workers in the school do and what ours does when it's a school-related matter, only at the times that we would be taking enforcement action. So five, six, seven years ago, we would write an LO ticket, an LA ticket, and they'd go before a judge, maybe have community service, and the parents pay the fine. Now, this is a structured educational process where they may have group setting, group sessions. Through NetFist, they offer the redirect program that's handled off-site, and that is basically their process so that they can avoid going into the court system as a juvenile. If they successfully pass that, the citation is voided, they're not issued a citation. If they don't successfully pass the program, or parents refuse to sign the agreement to join the program, then they are issued a citation.
So it's similar to like traffic school for speeding offenses when you're under 18, to keep them off your record? Is that how you're explaining that?
Exactly. And it's just not a process that the school or U46 has. Their social workers are dealing with any student that has any family-related issues or needs to talk to somebody, but outside of the law enforcement action process.
I think Trustee Swansky's point is that she doesn't want U46 dumping on us and costing us money, and then throwing their hands up and saying that's out of our purview. I think it's important that there's a fine line drawn in the sand if this is approved, that this is what they do, and this is what we do, there's no crossover, like there's-
I heard discussions or comments about truancy at the last meeting when this was presented. I don't believe it's our role to deal with truancy issues.
Yeah, currently, the school resource officers do not issue truancy tickets. If a patrol officer happens to come across a student that's outside of the school, that can be an option, but that's not necessarily our course of action or the steps that we would take. Most of those types of situations, we do bring back to the school, and to Trustee Gunstein's point, that there is that fine line. There's no crossover. They don't refer anything to us from within the school. The only time our social worker is involved is when a school resource officer or another officer within the school is going to issue some type of either citation or an arrest, and that's when our social worker program kicks in.
So let me ask a question about that. Let's say a student, we're called in, it's a situation where we would normally issue him a ticket, or her, and they say, no, we're going to go through this program. Wouldn't that, I mean, most kids that age are going to do whatever they can to avoid getting a ticket. So wouldn't they just keep going through the program and going through the motions?
So that is, so they're only allowed to go through the program one time for a similar type offense. What we do see is that we have more success when they, they may initially sign up for that program to get out of a ticket or to get out of an arrest.
Well, all of them probably will.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm in.
I think the parents think that's a good idea as well. However, I think once they go through the program and they experience the educational sessions about making wise decisions and what, you know, these different things, depending on what it is, it addresses the behaviors, that's where we've seen some turnaround, especially with our SRO currently down at the high school. She sees some of these students that go through this program, and they're just different people. They, you know, one of the examples I gave at the last meeting, just joining sports, having, you know, engaging with the SRO. So I think we just were able to see a little bit more, you know, positivity coming out of it, rather than just going to a court, a court case, court call.
Trustee Swansky's point, could we just ask U46 to cover some of the fees if this, you know, potentially could help U46? You know, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, you know? It doesn't hurt to ask.
I think that would be a really funny answer.
Well, you never know.
I agree with him. You never know.
I think they've, at least, Trustee Hopkins, at least they should know what we're paying.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I still think we should pursue the townships. I know, Ms. Administrator, that you said that Hanover Township hasn't provided grants in the recent past when we have asked, but I think that we should pursue the townships.
I would be in favor of, I know we started at a halftime, and then we went to a full-time contract. Why don't we do another halftime contract and have one and a half? I would be in favor of doing that this year, and then I would love, I mean, I think, I won't be hearing it, but I might be following up on what the actual results of the program are, because this is all pretty new to the board. You know, it's relatively new to me, anyway, understanding how it all works. I needed an excellent job of describing the positive results in the last meeting, and I think that there's some merit to it. But I also have my reservations, just like Trustee Swansky, about people just shoving work off onto our police department at our expense, where they, their social workers are doing this, you know? So I think that, I think we can trust the fact that you guys will maintain that, that barrier and that line, and you know when you're called in, instead of the ticket, it goes this direction, and the social worker will do their work.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would be in favor of another half, half contract.
You want to put a value on that?
Well, that'd be $33,500, right? My math is okay.
Right. We round it up, $35,000, call it a day.
$33,500.
$3,500.
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I still think we should wait for the study and things like we talked about.
I don't think the study was going to be a part of that, though, Trustee Hopkins, because that was for employees.
Employees, not the contract.
Yeah. Everybody okay half, half of that? We're all good on that? Trustee Hopkins? Okay. Got what you need, Madam Administrator? All right. Next one, Joey?
Reduce, number four, the, reduce the Golf Program Machinery and Equipment budget by $320,000 for the removal of the Golf Cart Lease Purchase Agreement.
Yeah, I have some comments on that. I want to make sure they can hear me. First off, you know, just in the memo that we received from, on this issue, the Golf Cart revenue last year produced roughly $33,000, $33,000, $331,000, and currently, for the fiscal year, we're $284,000. Now, guys, I have to tell you, you know, this is a very expensive project, but that's a quality golf course that we have out there, and I don't know how many of you people have seen the condition of the golf carts that we have right now. They're crap, okay? I had to go out there last week, Thursday, to take a buddy of mine passed on, and we have a sycamore tree on number four, and we want to have a plaque made up for him. So I needed the dimensions off the plaques that we have there. There's three of them, and that would be the fourth. And the damn golf cart that I had literally hardly moved at all. The seats were ripped, it was one of the worst, I didn't think we were going, Ray, my son was with me, I didn't think we were going to get out there. We have a quality golf course out there, and to put forth such a crappy product as the golf carts that we have now is embarrassing, and we have to do something to improve that. We're raising rates out there now, we have spent $3 million on the irrigation system, and we have crap golf carts, and we see all these other courses that I play, and they have quality golf courses that run and operate. It's ridiculous, and the maintenance that we have here, I don't agree with that number of $18,000 being spent on maintenance, because I know for a fact that these guys are spending more and more time, and the conditions of those carts are only going to get worse, and it's going to go up. The worst thing that's going to happen is if we don't move forward with this, the trade-in values on those carts are going to go in the toilet, and the costs will increase for the new golf course. You won't be looking at the numbers that we have right now next year. They're going to increase. I can't tell you what percentage, but, but the wear and tear on those courts that we have right now, they're dead. We've, I know, I've been out there, when carts have died, I've been in carts that have died out there, I've had to call the clubhouse, they had to bring a new cart out to me, it holds up play, the other people behind us are complaining that it's slow play, it's just a ridiculous thing. And those are just a few of the comments that I have on it, and I know that we have Bartlett Hills here as staff, and I'd like them to also have, make some comments regarding what I've just said and some of the thoughts that they have on replacing the golf carts.
Let me just interject, Ray. So is that accurate number, $331,000 is generated in revenue on the golf carts alone?
That was our, yeah.
Okay, so for a five-year term, based on the trade-in this week, next week, this month, whatever, it looks like it's $395,000 for a five-year term. So we can more than cover the cost in almost a year and a half of the golf carts. Is that, is that math correct? So if the five-year term is $395,200, and that's the lease with maintenance, with maintenance, you're telling me in one year, we generate $331,000? So that tells me in the first year and a half, or first two years, we could cover the whole nut, the whole $395 with maintenance. Is that accurate?
Is that $395 for the entire five years?
That's the entire five years.
It's not, well, most leases, you're paying an annual fee.
There's a chart on the second page of the committee.
Sorry, there's a five-year, all the way to the third page here.
Did I miss the chart?
So it, fiscally, it makes sense. If the numbers are accurate, we're generating $331,000 in revenue from golf carts only, and that's in one year, right? $331, one year. Over five years, we're getting the golf carts for five years for $395. Again, in a year and a half, we'll make our money back. And if my math is correct, the little things I did here, based on May through November, that's $350 a day for the seven months that we're open.
It's hard.
I think, I think based on the numbers, we could do it with maintenance, and we'll pay it off in a year and a half. We'll generate the revenue in a year and a half.
It's generating the revenue.
Yeah.
You're not going to pay them off in a year and a half. You have a five-year term for a lease, it's annual, correct?
There's, if you're going to do a lease with maintenance agreement?
So my original question was, so it's $395,000 for five years, correct?
That's correct, for the lease with maintenance, that's correct.
Zero the first year.
The trade-in value is $121,000 today?
Those numbers include the trade-in also. That is part of these numbers that you see.
That's why we're not paying anything in year one.
That's correct.
So if I was to go buy those golf carts, or lease those carts right now, it would be $395,000 plus the traded value, correct?
So $500,000, or $450,000?
Yep.
I think over the last week, Scott Strickie sent numerous emails out, and I'm in support of the golf cart, so.
Okay, I think-
Whatever staff supports as far as lease, not lease, or maintenance, I trust their opinion on it, so if that's the route they want to go on, I'm in support. Are our previous golf courses dramatically reduced from seven years ago to this year is $25 or less than seven years ago? I would anticipate, or that that would be secure.
Are we getting like mag wheels and stereos in these things?
Not quite, but they're, they're-
But they do have the GPS.
As long as they get Ray around the court.
They have, they have the-
Yeah, but that's extra, I mean, that's, that's a subscription that we, we talked about that. But it would be, it's part of it, but not part of the golf cart lease.
So then how do we-
I play a golf course that had seven-year-old golf carts that were under one of this company's lease agreements last summer, and I thought I was in a brand-new golf cart. So the care, the quality of the golf carts will dramatically increase, especially in years four, five, six, seven, and eight going forward.
And one of the things, just to add to Phil, to keep in mind, is our, our line item for maintenance on the golf carts. In the last three years, we've spent $40K, '10, '14, and '16. But if we do do the lease with maintenance agreement, those, those numbers will be decimated to about $1,500 a year. So when you look at those dollar values, take into consideration the reduction of cart maintenance that we spend.
And then how do we address the very important GPS on the golf carts?
Those would be transferred seamlessly.
Transferred over.
That's correct.
The new fleet would come with new wiring, everything would be new, the one thing that would, the Nadler golf carts would move the existing screens onto the-
All right, everybody's good with that? We can move on.
Do, there's a few different scenarios, is that, just for clarification, there's-
Whatever Joe described.
Five, six, seven, and eight-year-
Well, that's if we decided to go with the maintenance. I see your number here, if we, if we just continue to do maintenance in-house and trade the golf carts, and then we're at $319,000. So based on the $331,000 in revenue, we could knock out that cost in the first year.
That's, that's correct.
We have more than enough money to cover either option. That's, that's the point.
Last, last statement on it for me. It seems like the conversation will lead to us having a clear conversation about raising the rates at the golf course over the next year, because we're offering a quality golf course and amenity, so.
I agree.
All right, if there's no further-
Going forward, we know exactly what these numbers are going to be when you, when we, if we were to purchase them again, you don't know, five, six, seven, and eight, those numbers could dramatically increase as well.
Well, we go up to, I know we go up to different places to golf, like Geneva National, we pay $145 bucks around. If we had carts like we have right now, there's no way people would pay $145 bucks to play those.
Then like, if I could say something, with the current fleet we have right now, year one, two, and three, we only spent on maintenance $4,000, $2,000, then $3,000. But once we got to year four, we were spending $10,000. Year five, $10,000. Year after, $14,000. And now this year, we're at $16,000, and the season has just barely began. So that $16,000, I would guess, will be at $18,000.
You guys have already sold us on it, so I wouldn't oversell this.
I guess the only question is, is do we, do we want a lease with maintenance, or do we want a maintenance in-house?
Oh, we want to go with maintenance, sure.
I think we do.
We're going to suggest a lease with maintenance.
And then set it all down.
Look what they all have.
All right, if there's no further questions, we'll move on.
So five-year lease with maintenance, is that what?
Yep. And then to Dan's-
Whatever the court recommends.
Dan's point, we can review rates because we're offering a premium product down the road. Excellent. So then number five is increase the golf program, but we've reduced it. All right, thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
So you guys got what you need? All right, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Laporte. Next item, we have building and zoning committee, Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight, we have two items. The first item is the Devon rezoning. The petitioner is requesting to rezone a 1.12 acre property known as 27W, 27 West 637 West Devon Avenue, from the B2 local convenience shopping district to an ER1 estate resident district. The property was annexed into the village and was rezoned to the B1 district in 1993 in anticipation of the Elgin-O'Hare expansion, going further west to the property over Devon Avenue. The home of the property has been the office of Magnum Realty, and the petitioner intends to cease all office operations, and the business signs will be removed if the rezoning is approved. The petitioner is here tonight, if you have any questions, I turn it over to staff if there's any further information or questions.
IDOT had previously acquired the property immediately south of, let's see, why is this not showing up? So the property in question is the B2 zoning. IDOT acquired the property for the eventual expansion of the Elgin-O'Hare. They're no longer expand, intending to extend it past County Farm Road. So that's why the property was thought to be going commercial, because there would have been an exit there. That's no longer in the plans. So they're, the petitioner has been trying to market the property and has not had any interest.
So what do you anticipate their being there? Are we looking at townhouses, or?
Right now, it's just so that he can have the existing house and use it as a residence.
Okay, yeah.
And if someone wanted to come back in the future and rezone the property, it's something we could consider at that time.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's going to be, that's a big open, like, cornfield, right?
Correct. Further south of him, yes.
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
Sounds good.
Looks good. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thanks for being here. You're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Words await.
All right, Mr. President, tonight we have our second item, the petition, 24-12, 1350 Munger Road. The petitioner is requesting to resubdivide 1350 Munger Road into two lots, site plan review on both lots, and a variation to reduce the parking requirements for Lot 1 in order to construct a 149,000-square-foot building immediately west of the existing building. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the application, conducted a required public hearing, and the site plan variations at their March 6, 2025 meeting. The petitioner is also requesting to amend the previously recorded land bank parking agreement to extend the term up to 80 years. The current agreement was recorded for the entire property as part of an ordinance in 2006-13, required that the owner install 131 land bank parking stalls by June 2026. The Planning and Zoning Commission- The Planning and Zoning Commission did not review the terms of this agreement, it is subject to the village board's approval. This came before us previous, so we've reviewed this before. Do any of you have any questions on it?
No.
I don't have any questions, we'll send this off to our next board meeting for approval.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Looked by Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Laporte. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?